Woman Days?
Yes.
I got a text from someone saying that the YouTube wasn't streaming. Maybe that is what Diane is doing, trying to fix that.
Yep. Yes ma'am.
And is? Yes, I got.
Diane, let's let me know when you're ready. Are you ready?
Let me, yes, yes ma'am, sure.
Okay, Genevieve, are you okay? Did you get your message back?
It looked like it was, it looked like it was streaming now, yes.
Thank you. We're calling the Kansas County Council Committee of the whole meeting to order August 17, 2021. It is now 3:08 PM. We are going to be discussing, this is part two of the CARES Act funding that was appropriated with us. We have the people from the county executive's office as well as the firm of Deloitte here with us today. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Days?
Here.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Present.
Councilmember Fitch?
Here.
Councilmember Webb? Councilmember Clancy?
Here.
Councilmember Trachis? Councilmember Harder? Madam Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you very much. The committee takes official notice of and admits into evidence all St. Louis County ordinances and resolutions. As I mentioned earlier, this is part two. Thank you all again for joining us. We have a lot to cover. So Madam Clerk, make sure you recognize that Councilman Trachis has arrived. So we will start with where we left off on the previous discussion. Cora Faith, you can proceed. Thank you.
I'm Chair.
Madam Chair, we cannot hear her.
Yeah.
Okay.
Like, is it the volume? Hello?
Now we hear her.
All right, I'll try this again.
With your mask on, you really have to speak into the mic.
No, it was the microphone.
The microphone wasn't on.
Okay. Oh, sorry.
All right.
My fault.
We're good. Thank you. Okay, so I'll try this again. Madam Chair, members of the committee, my name is Cora Faith Walker. I'm the Chief Policy Officer for the St. Louis County Executive, Dr. Sam Page. And we're delighted to be back here again to discuss more about the St. Louis County CARES Act spending with a particular focus on the St. Louis County core aspect or area of the spending as well as follow up to some of the questions that we got during the August 3 hearing and hopefully a discussion about looking ahead to the future and ARPA. So again, I just wanted to start with this quick budget snapshot which just shows where we are with the overall budget for St. Louis County CARES as of yesterday. We've got a little over, a little under $25 million out of the original 173.5 million in coronavirus relief funds, monies that that we still have with us here in St. Louis County. So I wanted to just take a second. I know that this slide came up a couple of times last time and I wanted to just talk a little bit more about the compliance approach, if you will, that we use for these CARES Act funding and really help hopefully to explain and distinguish between the subrecipient monitoring that occurred and we were assisted with by Deloitte and their team versus the internal processes and controls that were established internally by St. Louis County employees for the St. Louis County Core and the sorts of internal controls that we utilize. So again, just kind of as a reminder, what we originally contracted Deloitte as the reimbursement consultant was for help to make sure that we were able to both maximize the amount of federal funds that we were able to receive to respond to COVID-19 as well as maximize any sort of FEMA reimbursement, which we can talk about a little bit more if necessary. And then any sort of other agreed upon procedures that were related to any sort of subrecipient monitoring. So individuals, agents, I'm sorry, agencies and organizations that received funds from St. Louis County through the St. Louis County CARES programs that were subrecipients, the monitoring, which again, we talked in pretty significant detail about during the August 3 meeting with Deloitte and you know, we kind of reviewed all of the different components that they are performing that subrecipient monitoring on. So internally, again, with St. Louis County Core funding, let me just skip ahead here just to make sure that I explain kind of what the processes are. And we've got Vicky Frederick here from the Fiscal Management Office who is able to answer any sort of questions or I'm, you know, happy to do so as well. But basically, and you all, I think, should have received yesterday that very detailed spreadsheet with I think over 3,000 different transactions and the details of which that constitute the entire St. Louis County Core bucket and the different transactions that went into that. But just by way of background so that you have an understanding of what the processes were internally. When we were, when it became clear from the federal guidelines and I think the FAQ that came out on May 28th, if I remember correctly, that basically said that St. Louis County would be subject to the single audit as well as subrecipient monitoring. We were advised by our legal counsel that we had been engaged with that we needed to be sure that we had both internal processes, internal controls, as well as processes set up for subrecipient monitoring and/or engaged a third party in order to do that. And so there were forms that had to be filled out. I'm sure you all are familiar with it, the material needs forms that even, you know, the various departments were given to submit requests for CARES funding. All of those different requests that came from departments, agencies, the various appointing agencies, if there were some, would have to submit this material needs form. And this request would be evaluated by Lewis Rice, who was the outside counsel at the time for eligibility for CRF reimbursement. And there was documentation that went along with it as well as justification that had to be provided if necessary. And so that in a nutshell, really explains the ongoing internal processes and controls that we had just for all of the county core bucket of funding.
Cora, let me interrupt here at this particular point. I want you to go back to the initial screen that you had with the doc, there you go, right there. Because if I recall correctly, member, many of the members had a question about where we wanted to look, we knew the 24 million, 25 million was left over. But there was one of those, and I can't really see it right now, maybe somebody else can help me, where we wanted to dig a little deeper into what all went on into each one of those categories. And if I'm not mistaken, if that came from members of the council or just me. But can you, can you do that? Was that the information that you provided? In your?
So this is available in the, like, all the, like, the breakdown?
Right, and that's what we were looking at because I remember you said that that would be a question for, I believe, Ms. Frederick, that she would, she could go a little deeper into what all went into each one of those, those line items there.
So this is, this is for the, so this is for the entire county CARES.
Right.
So Ms. Frederick was here to talk specifically about the core, so the county response, so that's the $20 million. But the overall, this represents the 173.5 million dollars in CRF funds. And again, we've, I'd say, discussed, you know, economic recovery, humanitarian, municipal and public health.
And I may have it confused, I'll admit that, so we can, we can move on.
Sure. And so we've got, so we've got that here, a breakdown of the core and kind of more details about that 20 million and what went into that. So if you, we just, I know that there were some kind of requests for some, I guess, data visualization, pivot tables, those sorts of things. So this just, I just tried to represent in different ways, just summaries of how that county core funding can be broken down or is broken down. This is by spending category. Again, you all received the breakdown of core spending by vendor. And you will see in one of the, I guess, columns in that spreadsheet, that there's spending categories that had been established early on. And so this, to just kind of help understand and have a good idea of how much money is going towards what different areas. This, okay, good, people can see what I can. This breaks down by department, the core spending. And again, with this PowerPoint that you all are provided, you can click on this if you want to, right click and look at the actual data to have a better breakdown of kind of what each, you know, the highlights were for each of these different departments and the expenditures for each of those different departments. This just kind of is a slide a little bit bigger for you to be able to see. This breaks it down again by vendor. And so again, this, the details of all of these different transactions, the various sorts of items that are associated with each, if there are items that are associated with them. All of that is included in that spreadsheet. Again, things like professional services that are provided by Deloitte, Boston Consulting Group, Lewis Rice, those are, that information, you know, is something that's ongoing. But we also have a breakdown of when we're charged or invoiced for professional services in that spreadsheet that you all received.
One second. We have, do have a question, Councilman Harder.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Just so I get this clear, so this is the core group, the core fund, the number five of the five buckets. This is the bucket of money that is not overseen by Deloitte Touche, correct?
Deloitte and Touche was engaged to provide subrecipient monitoring for our external grantees along with other things. And so this is not something that they are providing subrecipient monitoring for.
So they, they were not contracted to?
Because we're not a subrecipient, precisely.
Will they be contacted to manage it?
So, so let me go back again. So I, I mean, I don't know. I don't know if that's something that we want to do, if that's something that is worthwhile of our time. And so again, I want to go back and explain that all of these different expenditures that were conducted or that occurred within the core spending prior to the transactions were reviewed for compliance, eligibility, all of that by Lewis Rice because we needed to establish as St. Louis County internal controls to do the same sort of evaluation and subrecipient monitoring that Deloitte is doing for our external grantees and recipients. So the, I guess, work, if you will, that Deloitte is doing, more or less in terms of oversight, is being conducted, but it's not being conducted by Deloitte for this 20 million.
Okay, so the vendors that you have in this bucket of money, they're not repeated in any of the other four buckets of money, correct? They're paid from this, but not from others.
So no, that's not correct. There are several different vendors, or there could potentially be vendors that were engaged for other things within county core. So for instance, Salvation Army is actually a grantee as well as somebody that's providing our homelessness services because that's something that they are already contracted to do with our Department of Human Services. So that is a core county function that exists and existed prior to COVID. So they're listed here as a vendor because they were providing those services for DHS as part of what DHS does in providing services to county residents. They also were a grantee through the humanitarian, for instance, where they were engaged to do homelessness, case management, that sort of thing. So there might be instances where there will be people that are represented as vendors within county core because they were providing services for St. Louis County, but also they were grantees. So in that instance, Deloitte would be looking at Salvation Army and doing subrecipient monitoring. But for this specific service that they were providing under this county core, Deloitte wasn't doing it. We were doing it internally.
Okay. You see in this, it says county core by department. It says county executive, 2.8 million, almost 2.9 million. What is that for in this, in this bucket of money?
I don't know off the top of my head. I think a big part of it was BCG, if I'm not mistaken. There were some, there were also some items related to technology and things like that. But if I'm not mistaken, the biggest part for the county executive was the BCG contract.
The BCG?
BCG contract.
What is, what is that?
The Boston Consulting Group contract?
Okay, that one?
Yes.
Okay, so they paid for that and that was paid for out of this fund? Is that, in other words, the consulting contract went to the benefit of the county executive, but it was paid for out of this fund on this table, correct?
I'm sorry, can we say that again? Because I'm not understanding your question.
The Boston Consulting contract, 2.9 million dollars. That was initiated by the county executive?
It was executed by the county executive, yes.
Okay. So that, that price tag for that service is coming out of this fund as you have it listed here? Is that?
Out of the fund?
Out of this core fund?
Yes, this is, this is, yes, that is the core bucket, correct.
So that's in there. Now, what about the current contract with Fenton.com? Where is that coming from?
I would imagine that would be public health related, but I can get that confirmed for you.
Okay, do you know anything about that contract?
I'm familiar with it, yes.
Okay, what is it that they are providing for us?
So they are doing communication and outreach specifically related to vaccine hesitancy in areas and targeting areas that have low vaccination rates. So that's it in a nutshell.
Don't we have people doing that internally?
Internal?
Yes.
I'm sure we do.
So is that redundant?
I wouldn't think so if you look at the vaccination rates.
Okay, so they're not, they're not doing it internally, they need help. Is that why this was brought about?
I can look into that and give you an answer, but I don't want to speculate about why it was brought about.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? I can't see on the screen there. Councilman, is that Fitch? Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Walker. Going back to the Fenton Communications, they would certainly be in the top 15 if they were in the county core department, right?
Right, but they're not, it's not a, it's a public health related function. That's why I'm saying I'm pretty sure that it is in the county public health bucket. I think it's also important to remember that the work that they're, that they're doing related to vaccine outreach and communication is fun, you know, there's funding that is not limited to CRF and CARES funding that could be applied to that and likely will be applied to that. Again, ARPA has multiple funding streams that are not limited to the state and local fiscal recovery fund dollars that include things like outreach efforts related to vaccine vaccinations and vaccine hesitancy. So wherever Fenton might be currently, it is very likely that once we work with our consultants to try to maximize our federal dollars in reimbursement that we will be using FEMA-related dollars if we haven't already to do that. Does that say for that?
So since it's not in the county core bucket, that means Deloitte could be able, should be able to answer questions about Fenton Communications, is that, is that right?
No, that's not what I'm saying. I don't, I don't know what Deloitte can answer, but we can certainly.
Yep, if you could have one of them step up, whoever wants to.
They don't know anything about Fenton. Looks like they don't know anything about Fenton.
Well, let's let them answer that.
This is Sean Kilchrist from Deloitte. I'll have to get back on that web to pull up the files and look through that if we reviewed that in our other subrecipient work.
So my question is, is since it's not in this particular core group of spending, this is something that you absolutely will look at. Is that a fair statement?
You can look at anything, right?
Yes, right.
Well, I mean, you automatically would do it.
If it's in the four programs are in there, there's a good chance we've looked at it. I just need to pull up the files and see if that one was selected as a testing.
Okay, can we request that that be selected as a testing?
Yes, sir.
Please put that on your list of select to test?
Yes, sir.
All right, and then Ms. Walker, back to you. Last meeting, you said you were going to get us the documents that further supported the BCG invoices. I have not seen them yet. I don't know if anyone else in the council has seen those yet.
All right, oh, is that a question?
Yes, ma'am. That's, you said that the last CARES Act meeting that we had a few weeks ago, that you would get those additional documents that came to light that they had to produce because they had not originally produced them as they were required to. We just had the simple invoices, that there was further supporting documents that you were going to produce and give to us that supported the billing that BCG sent to St. Louis County.
Yes, we're still in the process of getting that as I said in the email to you yesterday, so hopefully we'll get that to you very soon.
Okay, I did not see that email. Thank you.
Yeah, sure.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any further questions? Let me, let me just say, because I thought, and it might have been a slip, that you said the 2.2 million dollars for Fenton was coming out of ARPA funds. It was that?
No, no, no. No, I said that it could, that it could potentially, that.
Well, we already have the contract, so when we had the contract, where did you propose it to come from with that?
The contract with Fenton?
Yes.
I'm not sure what the specific details of the contract are, but if, you know, depending on how it was written, where it just says that they would use federal funds, for instance. I mean, the fact of the matter is, if we can maximize and get 100% reimbursement from FEMA, then that's what we should do to cover that and then.
And so if you cannot get that from FEMA, then where is it coming from?
So it would likely be CRF funds.
Okay. Deloitte's contract, I thought, ended August 31st. Is that correct? Is that still correct? Or did I miss that? The current contract that they're on?
I guess it's been extended, I'm not sure.
Oh, it has been? To when? 12/31/21? Okay. Okay, well, I, I remember from the last meeting that there, that there was a bucket of money that you were not, you didn't have the specifics of. And I don't know how much was in that particular bucket, and we asked that question a couple of times, that everything else you were able to audit, but that particular bucket you were not. Do you recall that conversation? If you weren't here, you got to get to the microphone. But you, but you weren't here the last time, so.
No, Vicky Frederick, I'm the Chief Accounting Officer, Caruth County. Basically, and I know this has been said before, but we hired Deloitte to do subrecipient monitoring. So that's what they've done. So they picked, we have identified payments out of these other four buckets that directly relate to payments to a beneficiary or a subrecipient. Our internal accounting procedures actually review every payment, every contract, make sure we followed procurement guidelines and so forth throughout the initial process. And I know Cora has let you know that there was an additional upfront review by Lewis Rice on anything that went out of the CRF. But in terms of a subrecipient, the, the guidelines require we do special procedures. These are over and above the normal county procedures. So you could, you could take all of our procedures, all of these grants that were offered went through our procedures, but there's an additional set of steps that need to be performed, and that is subrecipient monitoring. So that's exactly how we sort of divvy-dubbed the pot. We knew this subrecipient monitoring needed to be done. We did not have the staff on, on hand to be able to do it. So that's why there was a, you know, a multi-departmental request that came up and said, let's go out and hire an expert to help us with these particular steps. So, so that's a little bit of background in terms of where we are now. It's not that we said, don't audit this, but to let you know that we are audited. You know, we've been audited by our independent auditor, Skikich, just finalized an audit as of December 31st. They are going to be auditing these funds as well because they are grant funds. We have a single audit that will be done later this fall. And then next year, because we still have disbursements going on, we're going to be audited again. So these are subject to audit. All of the, all of the expenditures that have gone through any of these funds have been gone through our procurement, our internal controls, and they've also been reviewed by Lewis Rice. I do believe that Fenton is put right now into the, into the FEMA bucket. And so that is something we're going to be asking for reimbursement from FEMA. Now, Deloitte is also, as part of this engagement, helping us put together all of those project worksheets and submit to FEMA for those reimbursements. They aren't necessarily auditing us, but they're helping us get all of our documents together, put together all the support and justification and provide that to FEMA.
So who will be doing the monitoring of this Fenton contract?
Well, the Fenton contract isn't, isn't a subrecipient monitor, it isn't, it isn't a grant. We didn't go to Fenton Communications and basically give them a grant for funds. So it's a difference between, it was, it's a fee for service or a contractual relationship versus a grant, which is a subrecipient relationship.
So who will be monitoring the FEMA, the Fenton contract? Who will tell us what is in the Fenton contract if we are in compliance? Was this, did they meet everything that they, that we asked for? Who will be doing that?
Well, the county is actually monitoring it right now.
So that will be an internal?
It's internal, yes, and that's something that the county does.
Oversight from anyone, Lewis Rice, Deloitte, anyone, there will be no oversight of those funds at all. That's a contract that we asked for, 2.2 million, I believe it is. And so the only people that we'd be looking to see if it was spent efficiently and, and look and see if whatever we ask for, we receive will be internally. Is that what you're saying?
Correct, as we are, as we are put together right now, and all of the monitoring is all being done on a contract for contracts. We're doing that internally using our typical standard processes. Obviously, we did the procurement, we did the approvals. Everything went through the county's standard processes as if a normal transaction. Again, they, it will be audited. It is audited. It's subject to our, our independent audit. There's, we can't, and obviously this goes into FEMA. We are, Deloitte will be helping us put all the justification together, make sure we have every piece of paper, every document, you know, together to ask for that reimbursement from FEMA. If we, if FEMA rejects it, they'll be there to help us to appeal. But at this point in time, we haven't asked them to audit the county itself because we do have an independent audit. So we haven't asked them to do that.
Okay, I guess, maybe I'm not getting to the crux of the matter, but what I'm looking to, so you said there will be an audit. I know the FEMA, federal government, and this is a $2 million contract, and you're, you're saying to me, I just want to make sure it's clear, that they will be doing the auditing of this particular contract?
Excuse, when you, you said they.
FEMA.
FEMA. FEMA will definitely. FEMA will definitely look at every, look at the, the contract themselves and tell us whether they will pay or not. If they would reject it, then we have a right to appeal, yes. I mean, before we get money from FEMA, they actually look at every document. They look at every piece of paper we turn into them.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other questions? Any other questions on the screen? Fitch, Councilman Fitch.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Fredericks, if FEMA refuses to reimburse the county for this 2-plus million dollars and we lose the appeal, where does that $2 million come from?
The county would have to find another source for it. There, we have actually had FEMA do initial review of all under the FEMA engagement. Actually, FEMA came to us in January after President Biden basically gave an order to pay 100% and to help get these FEMA vaccinations, I mean, I'm sorry, to get the vaccinations out and done. So FEMA actually called us up. I've had several meetings with FEMA representatives. We actually provided them with initial contracts and an estimate of what our vaccination costs would be, and they've reviewed those contracts. If there were issues with them, they actually presented to us, and then we went back and actually dealt with those individually to make sure we didn't have a problem with it. I have not had any specific discussions with FEMA related to the Fenton Communications one, but I can definitely have that conversation with them.
Okay, and tell me how Fenton Communications was selected to do this work for the county?
That was something that the Health Department procured. I don't have personal knowledge of the details in terms of how that was procured.
So I'm confused. I thought you said that part of your work is to make sure that all the procurement rules are followed. How do you know the Health Department did that?
Well, you know, obviously that's part of my job, but I work with others within administration to actually make sure. There's a procurement director that obviously looks at every procurement, every solicitation, make sure that all of the boxes have been checked. And my job more relates to the payment. I make sure there's been an encumbrance. We have a contract, we have, you know, good, a receipt of their service or goods, and that we're making payment on time.
So if I understand your answer correctly, are you saying you need to check with the Health Department, see if they followed the process? Is that what you're saying?
No, I don't necessarily mean to put this on another person, but I, I feel confident that our procurement director has followed all the rules. He works very closely with the county councilor's office in terms of even writing up the contracts. I, so I'm, I have total assurance that, that members of administration and the county councilor's office have made sure that the procurement was done appropriately.
Okay, were you, were you with the county in 2013? I don't know how far back your service goes to the county.
Uh, no, sir. I joined in 2018.
I just, and I don't know if you're familiar with the situation in the Health Department, where an employee by the name of Ed Muth was able to steal over $3 million through fraud and then ended up committing suicide when he was confronted. And I don't know if you're familiar with that or not. And that was a situation where the Health Department was given the authority to select vendors and things like that. And I thought that issue had been solved and fixed after that happened. But it sounds like you're still not touching everything that the county is spending and making sure that the policies are, are followed. Is that, is that accurate?
That's something that I can't do alone. And I'm sure you understand that with the size of the, the county, the number of transactions. I can't personally be involved in every, every part of every transaction. So obviously, I know that the county actually establishes those procedures. We have a, a very substantial amount of documentation and solicitation that we have to go through and we have to follow. And I know we have people checking all of those boxes to make sure that we have done that.
Okay.
But Councilman Fitch, we can also have Deloitte look at whether or not it occurred as well, the same way that they did with BCG.
Okay, and thank you, Ms. Frederick. Ms. Walker, just one question for you.
Yes.
And this may be a question for not just you, but Madam Chair. Is I, as a council member, I, I take our oversight responsibilities quite seriously. I would be more comfortable having BCG representative and Fenton Communications come before this body to answer our questions directly. Is that something you can arrange?
Councilman Fitch, to be completely honest with you, I don't know how much that would cost. I don't know who would be responsible for that. You know, I, I think that when we're talking about trying to balance oversight with actual provision of services, that's something that I will certainly defer to you all with, but I can look into it and get back to you about whether or not that's something that would be something that we could arrange.
And Madam Chair, is that something that you would entertain, that request?
We can certainly look into that, Councilman Fitch, because there are several questions, particularly about the Fenton contract that I'm, I'm just not, I'm not comfortable with. And so I think that we could, we could, we could work out how to get that done, yes.
And there's still, Ms. Walker, there's still, what, $24 million left in those funds that could be expended for them to come to speak with the council, is that right?
I'm sorry?
The balance of the CARES Act funds are still over $20 million available. They could be spent if there's additional cost to bring them in for us to talk to them. Is that right?
I don't know. I, I can look into that, though. I would imagine that it would be something that would be included within the scope of the contract that we currently have with them and whether or not we would be able to have a new transaction. I mean, I, I just don't know, but again, that's something that we can look into.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any, any further questions? Oh, Councilman Harder?
Yes. Ms. Frederick, you come back up just a second. At the last meeting, we had some questions for internal management of these accounts. How many people do you have working on CARES Act funds in your department?
Well, obviously, I, I oversee payroll, accounts payable, accounting, reporting. So obviously, people in accounts payable will be reviewing invoices that relate to CARES as well as every other invoice. It also relates to payroll. I mean, I would mix between that. My, the total office has staff of 18. They are not 100% devoted to CARES or FEMA, but I would say that every person has a piece of their time.
So they're doing normal county business as well as handling?
Exactly.
Special projects or special?
Yes.
Expenditures, correct?
That's correct.
And so far, we were into this a year and a half now. How would you rate the services of that department and the accuracy of your being able to make sure we've got all the boxes checked when it comes to managing these funds?
It's been difficult. Obviously, this has been a, you know, a 50% more volume coming on top of our standard that, and we are, we are staffed to meet the standard. So it's been difficult. We've, in many ways, we, we are catching up behind. You know, the train moved out in front of us, and we've been running the whole time. I, I will not deceive you in that. It is, it is difficult to keep up. But we are looking at it. I personally do the quarterly reporting on CRF funds. And so I'm looking at the transactions that are being charged there. I have, I've actually authorized the move of many, many transactions off of the CRF and into FEMA because there is such a blend there, you know, in terms of what FEMA will pay as well, you know, versus CRF. So if we can identify, you know, every dollar that we can identify that FEMA will pay, will give us another dollar in CRF.
And knowing what you know now, what would you have done differently up to this point when it comes to accounting for all this?
It's difficult to say. You know, the, if you look back in the chain of events, we were in the middle of COVID, people working remotely, it would have been so hard to say, let's go out and hire five more people, right? And get them managed under this, and, you know, in this particular event. Everyone was in the same situation, every, you know, municipality was in the same situation. So it's hard to say what we really could have done differently. I, I wish I, I could have perhaps trained the accounts payable people to make sure that the account strings they, they were using were, were more focused, meaning, you know, that if it would have been FEMA going right to FEMA, not allowing departments perhaps to charge some funds to CRF that we've later said, no, this isn't allowable, and we've moved off. Because I do feel like we were just so much of the time, basically just trying to keep up with the train that was running ahead of us.
Knowing what we know coming forward with the ARP money, are we, we have the manpower, person power, I should say, for what you need to do going forward and the accounting expertise going forward, knowing that that's even more money coming our way?
Well, I guess what, what scares me the most about the ARPA, SLS RF, RF, RFR money is the fact that there is so much in terms of performance reporting required. The, you know, evidence-based, the, the performance that we were actually hitting the right populations. There is, I mean, this is more, much, much more than just the dollars. There's a lot of performance monitoring here. So that's what concerns me the most. The fiscal management staff has gotten together. We've identified a account structure that matches what has been spelled out by the Treasury so that we can track the dollars. But again, keeping up with the different departments and making sure they understand that it's not just spending the money, but it's also monitoring the performance that's necessary.
One last question. When you make a judgment call on a, on an account, do you make that call based on what you know, on the, what the rules are? Or do you take it before Deloitte or other people and decide, you know, where should we put this charge or where should we put this money? Are you making those decisions? Or are you working with Deloitte and others to make those decisions?
I would say it's a combination of both. It really depends. Something very specialist, you know, like in a FEMA arena, I've, I've gone directly to FEMA and asked FEMA the question. I've, I'm in constant, you know, communications with Deloitte. I mean, even on the submonitor, the subrecipient monitoring that they're doing right now, I have calls probably three times a week with questions that they're raising, saying, is this, is this what the county wants to allow? Because, you know, certain, certain things are gray. And sometimes the subrecipients are even pushing the limits in terms of wanting reimbursement on expenses that are in that very much gray area, or maybe they're in the black area, and we have to tell them no. So I'm in constant communications with Deloitte.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Thank you.
I think Councilmember Fitch might have.
Councilman Fitch, did you have your hand up? Okay.
Yeah, so Councilman Harder, your question actually is a, is a really good segue to just follow up. I wanted to just give you all a little bit more information about some of the evaluation metrics that Deloitte is gathering, or I guess, you know, when they're doing the, I guess, subrecipient monitoring, when the various grantees are sending all the information in and things like that. This is also part of the data that's being collected. Again, I want to mention that, oh, shoot, that we're still in the process of, you know, getting this information and closing this out. But just to show you some of the metrics that we're looking at to hopefully just kind of inform and, and, and help us figure out whether or not what we did was worthwhile, whether or not it made any sort of difference. But also, I think the important thing, just to get back to what Ms. Frederick said, was about the performance measuring or monitoring and the evaluation metrics that are required for the state and local fiscal recovery funds in ARPA. We have been somewhat in the process of getting some of that same sort of data that has been identified by the federal government as well. And so hopefully, once we're able to get all this stuff in, closed out, we can do some more in-depth analysis, just kind of about the overall impact of the program and programs and so on and so forth. But I just wanted to highlight that for you all and just show you that these are some of the metrics that are being obtained through the humanitarian. Again, things like health, where it's just a matter of buying PPE, things like MRP, for instance, where they're not services, they're, you know, actual items, for instance, that are being purchased. Obviously, those are pretty straightforward when it comes to evaluation. But, but kind of getting more in detail, doing, I would say, some more substantive qualitative analysis, we'll be able to do that once we're get, getting, getting all of these various grantees sending us this information in to close this stuff down.
Let me ask you a question here, because I do believe your food, food programs were through the humanitarian bucket. And I think, I'm not sure if we asked this on last week, but how, how did you, how did you determine that what you said was being done was being done with these, when you have people in cars and they're lining up getting boxes of food? How do you know if those were St. Louis County people? I mean, at, at the end of the day, you know, if you need food, you need food. But I know that we are responsible. And so perhaps some of our, our citizens could, maybe could not get because maybe others did. And I do know that in the vaccinations, that a lot of the folks that came to the, the site that I was were from Illinois. So I'm trying to figure out, how have you determined that we indeed serviced St. Louis County people? And, and, and those numbers, whoever the, the people are, how, how did you determine it? Or how have you determined that?
Sure, yeah. So there are a couple of ways that, that we, I guess, were providing oversight of that. So each of the different grantees, the, the organizations that we worked with had to provide budgets, had to provide details about what they were purchasing the food or, you know, what they were using the funds for, all of that. I will say, and I think I said it last time, for many of these organizations, the CARES funding that came from St. Louis County was just one source of funding that they got to be able to even conduct these food drives and so on and so forth. So there might not be a way to clearly demarcate which funds were CRF funds that went to specific St. Louis County residents versus being able to say they were able to conduct, and this is the data that we've got, this many food drives, this many people were served in the food drives. And typically, what we're able to do, again, these were many organizations that are based right here in St. Louis County, they were able to extrapolate based on people that they've served before and just, you know, make estimations about how many people were served with the funding that we got. So we've got estimates, but there's no way for us to actually say.
Actually, at the end of the day, you just really don't know. Because we know that the first and the fourth have food deserts, and there would probably likely be more people that would need services in that area. But we cannot, we cannot really truthfully say that those were the people that were serviced.
So we can't say with what money they were serviced or how much funds they were serviced?
Even if they were, if you, if what I'm hearing you say is true.
Well, I mean, I think what we can.
You turned it over to a third party.
Yeah.
And they disseminated that. So you would have to depend on them to get back with you with that kind of zip code information or whatever the parameters are. And I'm, I'm, I'm hearing you say that you really don't have that specificity in terms of how that was done.
So I think what, so if there was a dollar that was given in CRF funds, we don't know whether or not that dollar paid for somebody from the first district. What we do know is how many food drives occurred in the first district. And based on that, and based on these organizations' experience with doing this, again, many of these organizations have had a lot of experience doing this. We, you know, wanted to make sure that they were targeting folks that needed the support, which turned out to be a whole lot of people. which turned out to be a whole lot of people. We know where these food drives were located. We know where all those things were. But yeah, we don't know, we can't know, you know, who came through and if, you know, when they came through, the meal that they got, how much of that was covered by CRF dollars.
I think that's, that's the answer to my question. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Questions at this particular point? I don't see anybody on the screen. Councilman Harder?
So what you're saying is, are we, are we ready for these evaluation?
Nowhere close. No, so typically with evaluations, any evaluations that are even, you know, worth their while, I mean, evaluation science is pretty complicated, to say the least, but we're talking about $173 million. We're talking about, you know, numerous grantees, so, and, you know, multiple different metrics for each of those different grantees. So no, we're not anywhere close to being able to conduct any sort of, I think, useful analysis.
And who's responsible for getting that put together?
Well, that's something that I think we would have to talk about. I mean, I'm, I understand that the notice for this was qualitative analysis. And again, typically, that's something that is done by professionals that do like evaluation sort of work. So, you know, we can do, I think, just because of the nature of my background and professional expertise, some preliminary analysis. But if you want something that's actually, you know, reputable that you could use, I would absolutely recommend, you know, like putting an RFP out, bidding on it and having like professional evaluation services to come in and look at the money.
Okay, so Deloitte and Touche would not be responsible for that or?
They're not, they're not program evaluators, but I guess they could if you hired them to do that.
Okay. And would they recommend a program evaluator? Is that something that's within your scope?
I'd recommend that, in case, we typically don't do that at Deloitte, the program evaluations, but there are firms that do that, that, you know, a lot of times they're smaller firms versus the bigger firms, and there's some folks that specialize in that area.
They're oftentimes they're academic institutions. I was gonna say oftentimes for something like this, I mean, this is more or less public health and human services that you want to look at. And so, I mean, oftentimes they're academic institutions that are able to perform a lot of this.
So what you're saying is that if we don't, if we don't contract with someone or some group, we won't get that information at this point?
No, what I'm saying is that the, if you contract with a professional evaluation services, like organization or somebody that can do it, I, that would be a lot more reliable than if just Cora Faith Walker who does not have staff. You know, I mean, I could do something with Excel, but I'd like to use, you know, a pretty robust statistical analysis software. We don't have that in the county, so it would be a lot more reliable if you actually contracted somebody to do it, if you want to make any sort of conclusions based on the evaluation is what I'm saying.
And based on your knowledge of that institute or those institutions, would they need to be involved like right now? Would they need to have been involved early on?
Depends on what type of evaluation you want.
Okay, but using these metrics, would they use these metrics or come up with their own?
Again, it would depend on the type of evaluation, whether or not it's a process evaluation, whether or not it's an impact evaluation. I mean, it just really would depend on what you all like would establish as what it is that you want them to evaluate. I mean, qualitative is a pretty broad descriptor. So, you know, it really would just depend. But I think that, again, what I'm trying to point out is that we have a lot of, I think, useful data, or we're at least requiring a lot of useful data to come in, so that if at some point in time we want to do a real robust evaluation, hopefully that's something that we will be able to do.
And if we wondered that, how would that have to happen? Would you put in an RFP for that or would we, or how would that be done?
I can get back to you on that and give you some ideas for next steps.
Okay. So what you're saying, these evaluation metrics, we won't, we won't get answers to these right now or in the near future?
No, what I'm saying is that about, like analyzing these, it's not going to be something that's going to be done anytime soon, I think, in a way that's useful, just because we're not going to have all that information yet. So, I mean, we can analyze what we have right now, but again, it's not going to be representative of all of the different grantees. So most, I think, useful evaluations and what I've looked at and researched about useful evaluations typically don't begin really, depending again on the type of evaluation. But if you're like looking at the impact, which I think is what y'all are interested in, you can't really do that until after you've gotten all the data in, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Okay, so that is all that I've got. So I'm gonna hand it over now to the Deloitte team. Oh yeah, I'm sorry about that. Is this the right one?
Yes.
Okay.
Correct.
Thank y'all so much for the earlier questions. For Deloitte.
Thank you for, thank you for joining us again.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. So I'm gonna give a brief introduction and, and really, once again, we're sort of migrating from, I always look at them in a sense, the recovery and the response side, right? And I think I mentioned this before, the CARES Act was more of the response and the ARPA is more of the recovery. And we're gonna hit to that next side, which is a pivotal point for the, I think, the council and for the executives and the county. So obviously, you know, last few months, there's a lot of counties, a lot of cities, a lot of municipalities that are trying to figure out ARPA, trying to figure out what to do and develop a strategy for the programs that has been the money. It's pretty crazy. So you guys aren't unusual with where you are right now. Obviously, I have Damon, who's my strategy specialist, and Jeff, who is gonna talk a little about the roadmap with, with regard to the ARPA program. I wish Christina was here. She was here last time. She's done a lot of the plans, work. She, she's been on the road a whole bunch of weeks. We let her stay back in Philly. But I do want to reiterate, there is a lot of money. ARPA, you know, recovery aspect to ARPA is, you know, you guys, 193 million, if I recall. But I think what's a must is that the council and the county really sets the strategy, sets good governance, develops good programs, implements those programs, and does a good robust job of monitoring, ensuring compliance. Those are the key main steps that I think Jeff and Damon will talk about as they get up here shortly. And once again, I reiterate, you guys are not alone. This is, everybody's going through it. In fact, Damon will probably give you some examples along the way that he's done with some other counties across the United States. But the main thing I wanted to bring up with ARPA again is, you know, is to focus on areas that helps your constituents as it relates to the negative economic effects, lost revenues, public health challenges, pay for essential workers and invest in water, sewer and broadband. Those are the major buckets that really they focus on. And then, once again, there's so many different funding streams to support those five or six areas. And that's, once again, what I'm hoping Damon will spend a little time on. So if you, if y'all don't mind, I'm gonna kick it over to Damon and talk a little more of the strategy side.
Pleasure to see you all again. I promise I have better pictures than this. This is the wrong one. I do have better pictures of me than this, I promise.
This might be the one that I emailed yesterday. I hope it's not the, I hope I didn't email y'all the wrong one yesterday.
Oh, I'm so sorry about that. Am I not sharing enough?
Yes. Yes.
All right, sorry about that.
Can you guys see it on the screen? The remote people? Okay, thank you.
All right, so real quick, I'm gonna go through, a lot of this stuff you may have already heard, you may have already seen, you may be familiar with. So I'm gonna move through, through things. Please, please, please stop and ask questions. It's what I'm here for. All right, the American Rescue Plan Act is a massive, massive, massive piece of legislation. All right, the CARES Act was complicated, it was rushed, there was a lot of not great legislation or not great statute written in there because they were in an effort to try to get the dollars out the door as fast as they could. You guys all watched as every county, every city, every state in the country struggled with Treasury releasing guidance, sometimes contradicting what they'd said the week before and then going back again the week after. It's extraordinarily complicated. This is a bigger bill with a lot more money, but with clearer rules. All right, so that's the kind of trade. There's still a lot of gray areas because what do you do with $2 trillion, right? You have to kind of think through the different, I mean, there's 8,631 applicants right now who are receiving dollars from this, government applicants who are receiving dollars. Someone is going to think of something that Treasury did not think of. All right, so we're gonna have to continue working through that. What you see here is how all this is broken down. Now, the part that we're here to really talk about is the green box, the state and local aid, $350 billion. All right, the part of that, that is where your 193 million are coming from, and those are the dollars that you guys have the discretion within the parameters of the statutory frameworks, regulatory frameworks, you guys have the discretion over. The rest of these funds, they exist out there and it's important to understand that they exist out there. Because six months from now, you may say, Damon, I want you to design a program to do X. And I sit down and start doing that with my team and I look at the rest of ARPA and say, hey, one of these other buckets can pay for that. Right? So that's money you don't have to spend out of your pseudo-discretionary dollars. That's money you can go get from somewhere else. All right. As we've talked about, I'm gonna move this little box here so that I can see my own size. As we talked about, CARES Act was primarily focused on stimulation, stimulus and immediate response. That was the idea. Think of it, if you've ever seen like a hurricane or tornado or something, it's when FEMA first shows up, it's the, you know, putting people in shelters, all those sorts of things. And you saw a lot of those sorts of things that existed, right? Transitional sheltering programs, additional unemployment, disaster unemployment, similar programs. ARPA's not, it's a much broader piece of legislation. It is intended to be a recovery program. They gave you a year with CARES, ultimately extending it a year, but they gave you a year with CARES. They gave you four, three with ARPA, plus two years to finish making payments on stuff that you've obligated. The deadlines, like I say, they're longer. The dollars are flowing directly to localities and not through other entities and other government entities. Your non-entitlement units of local government are receiving their funds directly from, will receive it directly from the state and then have to report to the federal government on their own. So anybody who receives funds is going to have to report to the federal government. It's important to know. All right, so I'm gonna mostly focus on ARPA at this point now. The ARPA is designed as a system to come in and try to resolve the drivers, the things that made COVID so devastating on the communities around the country, as well as to try to alleviate some other suffering and some other issues. In that sense, that's why you see, you know, the ability to do water work and some other things like that. The idea is to address things like health equity and health outcomes and to look at what is really driving, you know, the disparate nature of health, general health and well-being across the country. It's designed to address the negative economic impacts of the crisis. All right, this is on households, this is on businesses, this is on individuals. So the idea is where CARES was designed to keep businesses from going under and to just keep them stable, ARPA is designed to get them moving again. Provides premium pay for essential workers. We've had this conversation. It is a different program now than it was then. All right, so the way premium pay works now is it's linked to the average pay that an individual is doing that job in that region earns, and then you can only pay up to 150% of that average pay. And then on top of that, there's a series of other constraints, maximum amount per hour, maximum amount per person. So when you decide to, if you were to decide to do the premium pay for essential workers, there's a lot of math that needs to be done on the backend to determine how much each individual person can qualify for. Additionally, it's designed to get after a lot of the people who were not contemplated under CRF. So, under CARES. So CARES was designed to get after law enforcement, firefighters, was designed to get after nurses, to a lesser extent, doctors and other like essential personnel, people that we normally think of as essential personnel. ARPA is designed to get after the rest of the universe of essential personnel, the people who still had to go to grocery stores and check groceries, the people who operated and cleaned the 911 centers, right? The folks who kept your buildings here clean. That population of individuals who they're contemplating here. It's not to say you can't use it for all the other personnel too, because you can. But it's just important that they took the time to explain that there's a broader audience here to be considered. It's designed to replace lost revenue. Now, lost revenue, there's a, because everything that comes out of Treasury involves a mathematical formula, there's a mathematical formula involved here, but basically what they do is they say all of your total income, not just your tax income or everything else, it's just your aggregate total income against what you were expected to have for the year. So what we're seeing in some counties is they saw that they had a drop in, say, for example, parking revenues or parking tickets, because people weren't driving anywhere. But they had an increase in other collections in a different, a different area. That can't, they cancel each other out. So you can't hold them in isolation, if that makes sense. Investing in critical infrastructure, supporting the public health response and emphasizing on equity-focused services. Now, before I move on to the next slide, I'll tell you a little bit, there are, represent several counties across the country and a couple states and territories. There are some who are just a little bit ahead, three, four weeks ahead of where you guys are, and there are some that are three, four months behind you. Well, maybe not months, but something close. All right, we're seeing a spectrum. We're seeing at least one jurisdiction who really only wants to go in and do lead, lead pipes removal. That's what they're gonna spend all their money on. And it, that's a viable course of action. We're seeing other places that are doing very advanced back-to-work programs. So one of my clients did a $150 million back-to-work program, where they said if you were currently on the unemployment rolls and you go back to work every 30 days, or 30 days, 90 days and 180 days, you get a chunk of money out of this as long as you continue to perform. Right? And they saw their unemployment rolls drop precipitously. We're seeing them use it to incentivize people to get vaccines, we're seeing them use it for messaging around the pandemic. And we're seeing things that you might not have thought of before. We're seeing a little bit of work around training people to work in the medical profession, expanding capabilities. We're seeing capacity building within governments. Counties are, for the first time, have money on hand to actually train people to do a few of the things. Now, you're never gonna have enough staff to handle a quarter billion dollars worth of grants, right? That's just not feasible, because you're never gonna be able to tax your county enough to pay for all those people. But teaching a handful of people those skills and retaining some of the skills so you have some, a broader and more understanding of how this all works, especially as we're seeing disasters as they are around the country. We're seeing a lot more floods, we're seeing a lot more everything. And FEMA is, at its core, complicated, right? If you can handle FEMA, you can handle just about anything. There's only a few things you can't do with the money. Now, I know that there were some news articles that came out and they said, well, the only thing you can't do with the money is cut taxes. It's not entirely true. You can't plus up your pension fund, for example. All right, now that may not necessarily be a problem here, but it is a problem in a lot of parts of the country. You cannot do that. You can restore funds to your unemployment trust fund. Right? So you can bring that back up to its, its level. You can't do general infrastructure, i.e. road repair. Councilman Harder, you and I talked about this about a month or so ago, but Treasury did take the time to say, but if that road has to be torn up in an effort to put in drainage, which is required, right, to protect the area around it and everything else, then that's an allowable expense. You can't use it for rainy day funds, there's no putting this money aside. You can't use it to offset reductions in net tax revenue, although that is less of an issue for the counties, for most counties than it is for states. You cannot use it for any debt service, so if you've issued bonds or anything like that. You cannot use it to pay any legal settlements or judgments.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, sir, absolutely.
Right, right there, you talked about sewers. We just had in this region, about six months ago, an election with Metropolitan Sewer District, which is a separate entity that runs our sewer system, and they passed a bond issue that we, every user of the system is now taxed, a big tax, a user fee, to pay for a billion-dollar redo of their sewer system that's been long overdue and required by the federal government. Is that money that, i, i, is this money could be used to pay them and maybe reduce that burden off of the, off of the users that are now gonna have that tacked on to their bills going forward for the next, you know, how many hundreds of years to pay for it back?
On the surface, I would say no. All right, just based on the way that Treasury has treated everything in the content, con, under the constructs of debt, you know, and bond payments and everything else, I would say no. But it, it'd be something that we would be willing to look at, if that makes sense. Like, I'm not 100% sure it's no, that is a complicated, that is a hard one, because you have a prob, like, you've issued a bond, you're not allowed to do debt service, but water infrastructure is allowable. So there'd have to be some, we'd have to really look at it. That would take some time to do, we probably need to communicate with Treasury.
And with private-
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Hi, this is Jen Frank, and I don't mean to interrupt Mr. Armani, but I'm just wondering about how much discussion that he intends to initiate about the ARPA funds, because in looking at the, at the purpose of the meeting, as it was noticed up, it was discussions regarding the CARES Act appropriated funds and qualitative analysis of those, so I'm, I'm just, would caution the, the council about having a discussion about the, the ARPA funding.
Well, let me just say that we have also said, it says, and Deloitte Company, so I'm not sure, their contract was extended from the CARES Act, if I'm not mistaken. We have not utilized any of the ARPA funds for that extension, is that correct?
That is correct at this point.
Okay, so let's, let's move on.
All right.
Madam Chair, by my end, speaking to the record, I agree. Provides any indication that there'll be discussion regarding ARPA funds, so any discussion of ARPA funds-
We cannot hear Councilman Trakus.
Any discussion of ARPA funds is clearly inappropriate, it wasn't noticed up. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Councilman Trakus. I guess that's, you know, that's, that's fine if you feel that that's the way, but I, I do think that that's something that we do need to look at. Maybe we can spend that 24 million left off of CARES for that, we're not really sure, but if the council is suggesting that, I would not, I would not agree with that, but if that's the consensus, I'll move on. So go ahead. Go ahead, we'll, we'll just, we'll just delay the ARPA section, just go ahead and say it's CARES.
Then we can move back to court?
I don't think Councilman Harder was done.
I just want, could you look into that, that idea and see how that ties in with other sewer systems and things across the country, you know, that are privately run or, or not, or that are non-government?
Yeah, public-private partnership kind of arrangements.
Right.
Yeah, absolutely.
See if there's any overlap there or anything that we could maybe look at that idea.
No problem, sir.
And let me just also, okay, go ahead.
Before I let you go, Major Armani, I just wanted to take a moment, unrelated to all of this, and thank you for your service.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Armani, one, one last thing, and, and they really just were speaking of the ARPA funds, but we, at some point, we're gonna get to the infrastructure bill that's coming down as well, and we might want to look at some of that in, in terms of Councilman Harder's question.
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
All right, that concludes our presentation, but we're happy to answer any questions.
All right, was there someone else that needed to speak behind you?
Yep, we're just continuing on the roadmap to, to ARPA and, and whatnot, so I think-
Oh, so he was gonna talk about ARPA as well?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Any other questions from the council? Any questions from the council? Councilman Harder?
So just so we get it clear, so we're not gonna talk about ARPA going forward? We're done with that for now, or we have to set up another meeting?
Sounds like that's, you know, we'll defer to the council's, the council's prerogative.
So it seems, it seems pretty clear to me that this notice does not-
Yeah.
Notice up any, any indication about ARPA.
And, um, Councilman Trakus, I will say that we tried to clarify because it did look like it was the same one from last, last time, and so we weren't quite sure, so we were prepared for, for either way.
That's probably our error, we should have included that in the notice, but we did not, so, thank you.
So, yeah, we, we were prepared for this possibility, and so we're more than willing to come back whenever you're ready.
Any, any further questions for Ms. Walker? Councilman Fitch?
Just one final one. Ms. Walker, when can we expect an answer back on the request for BCG and Fenton Communications to come before this body?
Um, so BCG, I believe we actually got a memo late last night, so we should be able to have that fairly soon. I'm not sure about the Fenton one, but I will, I will let you know via email when we can expect to get that, but hopefully the BCG one should be coming by the end of the week.
Can you send that to my office and I will distribute to the council members if you don't mind?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Comments? No one on the screen? Councilman Harder?
No. Motion to adjourn.
Second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Don't oppose, no. Motion carries. Thank you all so much for coming, I appreciate that.
Thank you, Ms. Walker.